So Nellie was, uh, you get two hour delay or was it canceled?
It's canceled.
No, for yesterday, for today, I mean.
Today, uh, delay.
Liding up the change to cancel. For all the kids happy that look like them? I'm sure you were happy.
Is that your signature?
And see, show.
It's like a Y, isn't it?
Oh, yeah. The T and a line and a B and a.
Yeah.
Good mark signature.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome to the Monday, January 28th, meeting of the Bloomington School Board. Before we begin, I just want to say that there was a closed session scheduled for tonight, but we have postponed that until after the next board meeting. All members are present, please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Does it like to approve of the agenda?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. That brings us to recognition of students, staff, and public. And this evening, I will call upon John Weiser, who is going to introduce our friend at Best Prep.
Good evening, Chair Bartolata, Superintendent Fujitaki, and board members. I'm here with Kristin Donnelly, Career and College Development Coordinator at Kennedy High School, and Bonnie Vagasky, VP of Educational Programs at Best Prep, and Julie Anderson, also from Best Prep, to honor Best Prep as a friend of Bloomington Public Schools. If you'll give me a minute just to set the stage, I think it'll be, give you some good context about how we value, why we value this sort of partnership. Our pathways to career in college is our vision for every student in this district. So no matter your background, where you came from, what your upbringing is, we aspire to give every student the opportunity to leave us with career goals and the college preparation needed to achieve those goals. We follow students' passions, and so you see that in some of our programming, programming like at BCCA, programming like at our DA program, our Dimensions Academy program, the Nobel program, even at our elementaries, like the STEAM focus of Poplar Bridge and the Artful Learning focus of Hillcrest Community Schools. Our job on our side, the staff of Bloomington Public Schools, is to create these pathways and to know that we are, whether we're being successful and how we can continue that success. So how are we creating these pathways? On the academic side, it starts with our pathways to career in college readiness. You all know of Dave Heistead's work, but the listening audience might not, so here's a little refresher. We have Pathways Milestone Metrics. Dr. Heistead has looked at the successful achievements of our former students at various levels of post-secondary institutions using a measure like the ACT, an ACT score, and then he's mapped back other school data, other academic data, such as reading and math assessment scores, standardized tests, and GPAs and grades, things like that. Our career pathways are ever-developing, so like I said, we are getting better and better at following our students' passions, and for our high school students, those plans are getting more and more concrete every year. The place they track those plans is called the Personal Growth Plan, the PGP. Every student sets a goal, and the PGP app helps students track whether those goals are being successful, whether you're on track or whether you're on course with the activities around that success. It also alerts students of opportunities like scholarships, speakers, internships, and mentors. How do we know we're being successful in all of these efforts? Well, we look at data. Data like number of post-secondary, number of students going to post-secondary institutions over the last three years. We look at data like the number of students getting dual credit at our high schools. So this dual credit is the opportunity for a student to get a college credit at the same time they're getting a high school credit. And the number of students looking, are taking advantage of our flexible learning opportunities, such as the Bloomington Public Schools online courses, which we launched this year. This work is really heavy lifting, as you all know, and it can't be done without good partners, and so who are those partners? We know most, most well about our post-academic partners, like Hennepin Technical College and Normandale and the University of Minnesota, but remember, we have a whole wall behind us of strategic partners, including all of these folks, and tonight, we're here to honor Best Prep. So with that, I'll let Kristin tell you a little bit about their work.
Okay, thank you. You know, Best Prep has been a company that I have been working with alongside with Bonnie and Julie for ten years, I bet. I mean, it's been a long time. And so Best Prep is a Minnesota nonprofit company, and they prepare students for working with business, career, financial literacy skills, and they do all this through hands-on experiences, and they help students with success for life. And so without the help with Best Prep, it would be hard to get all of the connections that we get with our businesses that we can connect students with. Best Prep started in 1976. I did a little digging to find out a little bit more about the company, that some things that I didn't know, and they have served more than a million, like 1.6 million students and teachers over that time period. They help students in grades four through 12 all across Minnesota, and so we are just really grateful that Best Prep has been such a wonderful partner and friend to Bloomington Public Schools. Some of the partners are that they, that companies have founded Best Prep include 3M, Ecolab, Cargill, General Mills. So a lot of companies that they're partnered with, and that's how we are able to get the connections for our students. So some of the programs that Best Prep has that I personally been involved in, one of them includes Classroom Plus. That's a program where I can reach out to Best Prep, and specifically, it's Julie over here, and I reach out to her and I say, you know, I really would like to get a speaker in on financial literacy skills, or someone in on this specific career. And so Julie does kind of the hard work of reaching out to their partners, and they try and find those volunteers to come into our classrooms. Another program that we're actually working on right now, we have a couple avid students that are working with e-Mentors, or a couple avid classes that are working with e-Mentors, and there's another class, one of our fax classes, is also working with e-Mentors. E-Mentors is a program that's through Best Prep where students are partnered with a business, and so, for example, one of our businesses is United Health Group, and there's business professionals from United Health Group, and they're connected, each one of them with one of our students. And so there's a one-on-one mentorship where they email once a week, and that's all guided through the teacher and through Best Prep. And so then the kids get to ask questions like, what's college like? Or how did, if you knew something in high school, if you knew then what you know now, what would you do differently? What's it like balancing work and family? And so they are able to ask questions like that, and so they get a little bit of connection for after, after high school. The Minnesota Business Venture Camp is something that's specifically for students, but that's something that a lot of Kennedy High School students, especially our avid students, have taken part of, where they get to have a full week of learning all about the ins and outs of running a business, and really, a lot about leadership skills. And then the last one I want to touch on, that's my absolute favorite, is the Technology Integration Workshop. This is a workshop that's just for teachers, and so you get to go for a whole week. It's usually at St. Thomas downtown, so it's a beautiful setting, and you get to learn how to integrate technology into your classroom. And so it's, it's a, probably thirty different breakout sessions that you get to choose from, and you get to learn all about how, what can I do with technology and how can I integrate that into my classroom. The highlight of that experience is when you get to go and do a job shadow at a company. And so last time I went, I was able to go to Ecolab, and I got a whole tour of Ecolab, I met with a business professional there, and learned all about what it's like on the other side of the, the other side of the world with, working in big companies. And so with that, we are, this year, working on spotlight speakers. So at Kennedy High School, this is kind of a new thing with the career in college development, that we are trying to get spotlight speakers to come into our classroom. And so with the help of Julie, she has been helping get some variety of different speakers to come in, where we can market that to our students, and kids who, after they've completed their PGP activities, we're able to see which student is interested in different types of fields, and then I can reach out to those kids and invite them to come to specific speakers. So some of the great speakers that we've received, we've had someone from marketing from the Mall of America, we had a whole panel in for that, accounting, travel and tourism. We've had human resources, we have the construction trades, we had HVAC, plumbing and electrical professional, we've had the city of Bloomington, we had somebody, Eric Johnson, who is the Bloomington Community Development Director, came. And then in the future, for trimester three, we'll have a healthcare, education, human services, manufacturing, production, transportation, distribution, logistics, and then IT. And so we're just really thankful to both of you and for Best Prep for helping us with our students and helping them achieve a path to success. So thank you.
You're welcome.
It's truly a pleasure to be here. Thank you for this recognition, and Julie and I, on behalf of all of the Best Prep staff, there's fourteen of us full-time and six of us that work part-time within Best Prep, and we're just thrilled to be able to receive this recognition and to be here tonight. So thank you, thank you, Kristin, thank you, John, and I know Cheryl's in the audience as well, Cheryl Martin, so thank you as well for the recognition. We really view this as a partnership. In our office, we talk about Bloomington Public Schools a lot, and we recognize that it takes the teachers, it takes the educators, it takes everybody within the school and within the district to make the partnership work, and we're extremely grateful for that, and we really do talk about Bloomington a lot in, in our office, because we recognize this is a school, a series of schools and a district that we want to be engaged with, and there's great things going on here, and we want to be a part of that, and we feel lucky to be a part of that. This is one of our strongest and our best partnerships, so we're really pleased to be a part of the district and to partner in that way, and we do talk about it all the time. All of our programs, as Kristin mentioned, there's that relationship that we have, and the schools are utilizing everything that we have to offer, and we're thrilled about that. Over the past two years, I went and did a little bit of number tabulating, we've had over 2,000 student engagements over the past couple of years, and that ranks high within our office, so we're just so pleased and so thrilled that we can do that. Having been a past educator myself, coming out of the teaching field, I recognize all the work that teachers are doing day in and day out in their classrooms, and, and we love supporting teachers and coming alongside them and providing that enrichment and providing that enhancement to what classroom teachers are doing, and recognize that they're busy, so if we can lighten the lift, and if we can take some of that load off and be that intermediary from whether that be making those email mentor matches, whether that be Julie and her team in making those speaker matches, providing those professional development opportunities for teachers, or whether it be any one of the other numerous things that we're doing a staff from within Best Prep, that's exactly what we want to be doing, and we want to continue to be able to provide those opportunities for your students and for your educators in that way. And thrilled about the Chamber partnership as well, and that we can create that spotlight series, series relationship, that's been just a huge boost as well, and so glad that we can continue to work with the Chamber in that regard. Again, it's just a pleasure to be here. We love being on the wall. Thank you for putting us on the wall. That's awesome to see, and we took a couple pictures of that, so thrilled that we can be one of the partners, and thank you again for the recognition and continue partnering with Best Prep, whatever we can do to work closely with you and your schools and your teams and your students, and however we can support them, we definitely want to do that. So thank you again for having us here tonight, we appreciate it, and let's continue to build on that 2,000-student number engagement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
(applause). Madam Chair, before you, before you leave, your presentation was great, but now comes the tough part.
Yeah.
And Kristin, you've been doing this at Kennedy for how long?
This is my 24th year, yeah. I was a fax teacher before this year, I took a Tulsa position, some teacher on special segments.
But you have seen the evolution of all of this stuff and with Best Prep, and we've tried to work with the Chamber, you know, and different things like that, realizing the value that companies have for sharing with students, you know, be it middle school all the way up through high school, in their learning and giving them an opportunity to say, oh, that's what it's like. I took my ten-year-old into the pharmacy when I was picking up my pills, and all of a sudden, because I know the pharmacist, I said, say, would it be okay if he comes back and watches you work? She said, well, that's great, you know, and I said, you think you want to be a pharmacist? And he is kind of like, no, but at least it's an opportunity, and as we explore more and more and work with more and more companies, to give the kids the opportunities that they can participate in, at least on a small scale, or go on the internet and read all about a particular company or something like that. So it's been really encouraging, and you would say it's multiplied how much since?
Oh.
Five, six years ago?
Yeah, I mean, we're utilizing so many more things that they have to offer, and even, you know, for example, we had the Nertery, which is a company here in Bloomington, they came and spoke to one of my classes, and I just wanted to try to get a speaker on IT or something like that, and so then I reached out to Best Prep, and I said, can we go look at the Nertery? So they let us come and see what it looked like, and it was just an amazing experience, and I think that when students get to see companies, they get to maybe imagine themselves, just like going on a college tour.
Yeah.
They can imagine themselves like, huh, this could be me someday, I could work here someday. And so for them to see these different companies, it gives them a reason, why, why would I go to post-secondary, what are all these options? And so setting up experiences in a variety of different areas is really crucial for kids. So we can talk about it in the classroom, but that hands-on piece is really worked out.
Really the experience first, especially at the Nertery where you're allowed to bring your pets.
I know. They have treadmills there, I mean, it's, it's a really unique Darth Vader boardrooms, and so that's what their names of their, their boardrooms are, and it's just really a unique work environment, so it's neat for kids to see, so.
And that's that middle part that we want to be, Julie and her team are able to provide those tours or be that middle part to make those connections as well, and that's how we want to support it.
It would be hard to do what I'm able to do with providing experiences for students without Best Prep, so they're very valuable.
Anyone else? Anything else? Now you may go.
Okay, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last week, the Minnesota School Board Association Leadership Conference was held, and as part of the conference, there's a recognition luncheon, which MSBA presented its annual awards. Our own Dick Bergstrom received the President's Award for 2018-19. This award recognizes members who have completed 300 or more hours of attendance at MSBA-sponsored meetings and activities. Congratulations, Dick.
Yes.[1126.33][1126.33](applause).
Next, we will have our student board representatives' reports, and Jackson would like to go first this evening.
All right. Hi, I'm Jackson Amagala, I'm a senior at Jefferson High School, and starting off with a parent-teacher conference on Friday from 7:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., Jefferson cheerleaders are traveling to Nationals in Orlando in two weeks, also the Jefferson One Act play won first place in the Metro West Conference. The Jefferson Theater Company will present its competitive one-act production Fahrenheit 451 at 7:00 p.m. on February 8th in the Jefferson High School auditorium. Jefferson was on the news twice recently, one for the Jaguar Proud Wall, which was a wall that they did over winter break, us students would come into the Flag Hall, and there was all graduating classes of the four years that we're in right now, with every student, and right next to the student's picture was a quote from a teacher about their leadership skills or how they bring a positive attitude to the classroom. So a lot of kids were going out of their way to look at the wall, find their friends or find themselves. And then the other thing that we were on the news for was TJ Coffee House, which is a coffee house that is run at least once a month during the mornings where kids can buy donuts, cookies, or Gatorade. And then Kelsey Johnson and Samantha Olet earned high marks in this year's Minnesota Scholarship Art Competition. Gold Key entries were on display at the University of Minnesota in the Regis Center on February 5th through the 23rd, and qualified for the National Scholarship Art Competitions. Students receiving honorable mentions include Jefferson's Johnson, Brian Belvedi, Lucy Bianchi, and Elise Cook. Nominations are now being accepted for the 29th Annual Public Schools Senior Achievement Awards, which recognizes outstanding Jefferson High School seniors. Jefferson also had the Talent Show on the 14th. I sadly did not go, I only heard fun things about it, where kids just reveal their secret talents to the school in front of an audience, I guess, I don't know if I could do that. Bloomington High School seniors Samantha Sundenberg and Ryan Neeny are this year's AAA Academics, Art, and Athletics Award nominees. And then Bloomington students Keely Shamark, Abba Waka, Benjamin Grisilla, and Ally Starks are the 2019 Excel Excellence in Community Education and Leadership Award nominees. Hopefully, we're going to finish the rest of the trimester strong with a couple of snow days to allow us to keep up on our homer. Thank you.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
Do you mind sharing what quotes were next to your picture on the wall?
Great leadership.
That's good.
And I just would mention too, if you haven't seen it, go over there and spend half an hour walking, looking at all the different pictures and all the different things, and I even found my, my grandson's picture after the half hour was up, so it's kind of nice, because they're not alphabetical according to this, they're just kind of thrown up in there.
Okay.
And that makes it tough. Good work.
Go ahead, ask.
Okay, I'd like to begin with congratulating our Rhythm &amp; Gold Varsity Show Choir for their grand champion win in Lacrosse, Wisconsin, which is first place, and they also received Best Vocals, Best Choreography, Best Closer, and Best Female Soloist, who Sarah Correio Vilches. Our Colleen's Dance Team, which is a co-op with Jefferson, got second place in their Kick and second place in Jazz. Access Testing begins today, which is where our 260 English learners at Kennedy will take four tests to, required by law to assess their English learning and comprehension. A quick shout-out to Kenesha Bell, who is a Kennedy alum, who's making her mark on the University of Minnesota Basketball Court, making record, oh, she's a beast. And then, like Jackson said, the 2019 Minnesota Sculptureistic Art Competition, where we had our best turnout ever, where we had five gold keys out of the 309 to qualify for Nationals, five silver keys out of the 384, and three honorable mentions. And coming up, on February 12th, we have our Career Day for Juniors, where we get to select different speakers, and we rotate throughout the day to different speakers of our choice, which is super fun, I'm super excited for it. And on February 23rd, and the week leading up to that, we have our Sadies Dance, which this year is under the Stars, and it's informal, and we have super fun spirit days like Hoodie Day and Dwin Day, you know, that's what we get for not having a large voter turnout, but it's whatever. But thank you for everyone and their hard work at school and their attendance throughout the cold.
Thank you. Anyone have questions for Ally? No? Hi, is there anyone who wishes to address the school board on an item that is not on the agenda this evening? Seeing no one come forward, I will tell you that a requirement of our 12th grade government class is to observe a governmental meeting of some sort, things they may attend are city council meetings, school board meetings, or courtroom procedures. The Social Studies Curriculum Guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political processes and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. I see there's some students in the audience, I'd like to invite them to come forward, state your name and who your teacher is, and I believe you all do go to Jefferson. And at the close of this session or after one hour, whatever shorter, you can ask for a signature on your agenda over on the side from any of our administrative cabinet members. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm Nate Johnson, and my teacher is Daniel Storlein.
Okay, hi, I'm Lucy Bianchi, I go to Jefferson, and my teacher is also Mr. Storlein.
I'm Colin Anderson, I also go to Jefferson, my teacher is Daniel, Daniel Storlein.
I'm Cosette Burkholdt, so Cozy, I go to Jefferson, and my teacher is Daniel Storlein.
And finally, I'm Grace, I go to Jefferson, and my teacher's Dan Storlein.
Thank you. That brings us to the Part A of the agenda. Would someone like to move Part A?
Someone move.
Second.
Thank you. Part A is our Board Business, Field Trips, Contracts and Agreements, and Finances. All in favor of Part A, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Brings us to Part B. And first off is a resolution stating the revised intention of the school board to issue General Obligation Bonds 2019A to finance out facility projects. And our Executive Director of Finance, Red Zevkovich, is here to tell us about it, but first, who would like to read the resolution?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Burkholdt. Go ahead.
The result of the School Board of Independent School District 271, State of Minnesota, is follows. The School Board hereby finds and declares that it's necessary and expedient for Independent School District 271, the district, to issue its fully-registered General Obligation Alternative Facility Bonds, the bonds pursuant to Minnesota Statutes, Section 123B, Point 59, Subdivision 3, and Chapter 475, as amended, to fund a portion of the cost of the following projects, as included in its 10-year facility plan approved by the School Board and the Commissioner of Education, and related financing costs. Miscellaneous deferred maintenance projects at various district facilities, as included in the district's approval, approved 10-year facility plan, the bonds would be issued in the total aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $25,300,000. The district will conform to all aspects of the attached extract of meeting minutes and Exhibit A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Zevkovich.
Chair Bartolata, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members, this is a very similar resolution that the board approved back in December 10th. The only difference is in Section 6 of the attached and Schedule A, it details out the process that Ellers will use to sell the bonds. This process is used so that we're not locked into just one day of selling the bonds, it gives Ellers the opportunity to see how the market is, and at that point in time, selling the bonds at that, that point. And then we'll contact the board chair, the superintendent, and myself to get approval of the, the sale date on that day. And then we'll bring it back to the board on the 28th of February for final, final sale. Also in your packet, there is the information about the actual sale itself that we will send out to investors.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution establishing 2019 polling places. Would someone like to read the?
Madam Chair?
Please.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the attached list of polling places for the November 2019 School Board election, as provided by the City of Bloomington.
Thank you. Thank you.
This resolution is a new process that was put together by the, both the county and the city, that on an annual basis, we need to approve all our polling places for future elections.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Do we have any idea, or if you have top of your head, of how much the district has to, what our portion is to pay for these, these elections?
I'm, I'm not sure, I can, I can look into that.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Anyone else? Chair Storlin?
Madam Chair, and it is interesting to note that most of them are at churches and/or other, I think most of them are at churches, rather than at the schools, because I think we did pass at least a policy or something on it, that we didn't need to have them come into the schools for the safety of the students, and now that we have the new safe and secure buildings, so that went pretty well as far as having, having that accomplished. There's still 32- There's still 32 polling places, and every once in a while, we still hear about how crowded they are, and it's hard to believe in our city that we get that type of response.
Anyone else? Hearing no one else come forward, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Next, we have some policy reviews. We'll start with Revised Policy 407.
Madam Chair?
Sure.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves Revised Policy 407, Environmental Health and Safety Standards.
Second.
Thank you.
This was a policy update that part of it was an annual or normal revision process, but also back three years ago when the legislature changed the long-term facility and maintenance program, this policy wasn't needed for legislation. But the board policy committee felt that this still needed to be in process, so we more changed it for the process of taking care of what needs to be done, handling of chemicals and that on the school property versus a legislative reason for having this policy.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Revised Policy 706, donations.
Madam Chair? Resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves Revised Policy 706 regarding donations.
Second.
Thank you.
This is another policy that was just on a, the plan to be revised or to be reviewed. Very minor changes on it, more just clarity of different items that will come to the board versus ones that won't.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of this Revised Policy 706, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Next, we have New Policy 534, unpaid meal charges.
Madam Chair?
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves New Policy 534, unpaid meal charges.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
This is a new policy that's being required. It outlines how we handle both the payment of lunches and also the payment or handling of if a student's account is low, how we communicate to parents and families.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair.
So it says the student will be served a school reimbursable lunch. What does that mean?
Reimbursable lunch is going through the normal lunch line. It's not all a cart.
Okay.
Director Burks?
Yeah, Madam Chair. I'd just like to say thanks to the policy committee for, first of all, for the work that they do on all the policies. I'm not sure if the students in the audience understand how the policy committee works. There's three of us board members that sit and work these policies over, so that when they bring them to us, they've already been vetted. We have an opportunity to ask questions, but that's the reason not all seven of us are asking questions or speaking on these. I would like to say thank you specifically for this particular policy. It's nice to hear this, see this language clarified. Just wanted to add my two cents word.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, all I about this policy is that what Ally kind of pointed out, that the student will still be served a reimbursable lunch, because I think that's important, especially with our elementary students, that oftentimes when they run out of funds in their account, it's not the student's fault. And we don't want to be punishing the student by not giving them a lunch, so I'm glad that they still get the lunch while we're still trying to recover those funds.
Just a question, because I don't have students in elementary schools anymore. So when it says that we'll have, we'll be using, or we're using the reminder system, that means that we have already gotten rid of that old system of the stamp in the hand, right?
Correct. The reminder system is all done through either a robocall or a direct call from principals or counselors from the school to the parents.
Right. But that older system is not longer in use, right? For a few years now?
No, that hasn't. We haven't done anything like that for, I think it's been five to six years.
Thank you. Anything else? Hearing none? Oh, I'm sorry. Sure.
I think it's important to have this policy because there actually are those students who do have significant needs, and then there's some people who learn the system and take advantage of it. And so we needed to have some recourse as well in order to recoup tens of thousands of dollars that are lost through people not paying for meals. So we want to make sure kids get meals. We also want to make sure there's some teeth to be able to realize that they do need to pay.
Anyone else? Hearing none. All in favor of this policy, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None. Okay. That brings us to Revised Policy 457, Respectful and Professional Workplace. Would someone like to?
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves Revised Policy 457, Respectful and Professional Workplace.
Second.
Thank you. Rick Kaufman, our Executive Director of Communications, is here. Community Relations, pardon me.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Fujitaki, what I bring forward to you is Policy 457. This is a revision to a policy that was originally adopted in February of 2017, originally Respectful Workplace, which was new at that time. This revision specifically includes language that addresses workplace violence within the policy, and the accompanying regulation includes language regarding threat management and protection protocols.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none. All in favor of this policy, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Next, we will have Revised Policy 414, Mandated Reporting of Suspected Child Neglect or Physical or Sexual Abuse. Director Sorm.
Madam Chair, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves Revised Policy 414, Mandated Reporting of Suspected Child Neglect or Physical or Sexual Abuse.
Second.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent Eric Melby is here to talk about this.
Chairman Baralata, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board. The purpose of Policy 414 is just to ensure that we do the required reporting required by law of suspected child neglect, physical, or sexual abuse. The policy's been vetted by the policy committee, follows MSBA pretty closely, and recommend approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions, or Director Sorm?
Well, just to comment on this one, it's a significant policy to have something like this in writing so that everybody knows and that we know as a district, you know, that there are a lot of potential situations, and yet there are so many different types and definitions of all of this sort of stuff. So we had to clarify and put it into a policy and some regulations which identify what really needs to be done. And just a good thing that the Minnesota School Boards Association has staff that can check into the laws and various aspects of it. And this did take a bit of time to discuss with Eric and his staff in order to find out if anybody has fun, 10 pages of reading through here, so it really references an awful lot, but it's just a good policy to have and to know about. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none. All in favor of the Revised Policy 414, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Revised Policy 510 Point 2, School or District Sponsored Events.
Madam Chair?
Please.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves Revised Policy 510 Point 2, School or District Sponsored Events.
Second.
Thank you.
Policy 510 Point 2 is in place to ensure that there's no use of alcohol by attendees at school and district-sponsored events, such as student banquets or celebrations outside of school. Again, the board policy committee has reviewed and vetted this, and as has legal counsel and administration recommends approval.
Any questions or comments? Nope. Hearing none. All in favor of Revised Policy 510 Point 2, please signify by saying aye.
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 No. Next, we have Revised Policy 612 Point 1, Development of Parent and Family Engagement Policies for Title I Programs.
Madam Chair? Resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves Revised Policy 612 Point 1, Development of Parent and Family Engagement Policies for Title I Programs. Second.
Policy 612 Point 1 is encouraged, is written to encourage and facilitate involvement by parents of students in the district in our Title I Program Plan. It is a mandatory policy. We've closely followed Minnesota School Board Association language, invented by the policy committee and by legal counsel, and administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of Revised Policy 612 Point 1, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That brings us to the school calendar, 2019-20. Who would like to read that?
Madam Chair?
Please.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School, Independent School 271 approves the calendar for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Superintendent, members of the board, the calendar before you, proposed calendar was created by the District Calendar Committee. For a reminder, the calendar committee consists of representatives from the bargaining units in the district, as well as parent representation, administrative representation, and representative from the Office of Educational Equity. The calendar for this year, you'll see, reflects the elementary assessment days that we started this year going forward into next year. Maybe the biggest change would be to make up for the elementary teacher time missed during workshop week instead of doing four early release days like we're doing this year. The proposal is to have one day of in-service to make up for that day, and that would be on Friday, November 1st. It's, this calendar's been shared with cabinet, with various administrative and teacher groups in the district for feedback, and administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about the calendar? Let's start down there.
Who's on the calendar committee?
It wasn't me, but I just wanted to express my word of thanks to all that were on that committee. It's, there's a lot of work, for those that don't know. Eric ran over the people that were in there, the names, but there's a lot of work, there's a lot of energy, there's a lot of effort that goes into just putting together a calendar. You would think that it would take so much time and energy, but it does. And I really appreciate the hard work that goes into putting this thing together, so.
Did you have another question?
Yeah, and to thank too, the, one of the more difficult ones that we've had over the years is to try and get as many full weeks, or at least four school day weeks, and not have them chopped up so much as with various holidays and so forth like that. The unfortunate part about this is there aren't any students that get to go in there and share what they want to have. I guess they don't, I guess they don't matter.
I wouldn't characterize it that way, Director Sorm, and would take what I think is a recommendation under advisement for future calendar planning.
And the fact that we do have built in some weather days, severe weather days, in the calendar, like we're going to be experiencing.
Yeah, the calendar meets all the requirements that the Department of Education and the legislature puts forward. I know Director Korman had an email question today that we're working on some more concrete answers in terms of cushion, so we'll get back to you with more information on that.
Director Sorm, I was on the calendar committee. And I just wanted to say, I don't know who chooses. I don't know if all the bargaining units select their person, or Mr. Melby has, but they were a great group this year, and they worked really hard on getting that and taking it back to their groups and getting feedback and bringing it back to the committee. So I thought they were a great group of people.
Thank you, Director Steiglaff. It's a group effort trying to figure out who's going to serve on the committee, and it is a very good committee.
Madam Chair.
Wait, Ally wants to say something first.
Sorry, go ahead.
Two things. First of all, no hard feelings. We're all good. And second, is this, I don't see any, what's it called, early release days for finals? Is that still going to be happening in 2020?
Yes, for the high schools, it will.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that since we do have students here, and even if we didn't, the student's opinion does matter, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So I was wondering, with the early release days, getting rid of those and instead opting for a full day, Teacher Professional Development Day, how did that become? What was the reason behind that?
The way we have to do it currently is like we're doing it this year, and it's pegged off, if I can use that term, I guess, the high school calendar and the trimesters and the final schedule with the early release to make transportation work. And there was a lot of healthy, I think, and good discussion about is that having back-to-back early release days the optimal way to do it. At this point, we'll continue to work on fine tuning how we could do that differently, but we couldn't, in our timeframe, come up with that answer, so the decision was to do a single day instead of the early release days. I do think that we will revisit the early release days for future calendar, and just so everybody knows, we're, I'm putting myself on the line here, but we are going to pull the calendar committee back together. We were supposed to meet this week, which we're going to have to reschedule, but to come up with the following year calendar, so we can get two calendars done in one school year.
Okay. Well, why I ask is because the reason this came to being was last year, when the idea of having the early, or the early assessment days was something that we all thought was a great idea. The teachers wanted, the administration wanted, the school board wanted, but there were several of the school board members that didn't like the idea of eliminating two instructional days to have that early release. So the compromise, and I know compromise sometimes is a four-letter word in this district, but the compromise was that the teachers gave up a week during their workshop week, and we gave up the first day of school, and then we made that time up through their early releases. So knowing that there was problems, that school board members weren't okay with the elimination of two instructional days, I'm wondering why this is the first time this has come into the board? Why was this wasn't told way back in the process before? All these people put all this work into the calendar?
It's the same amount of the days. It's taking one day out of workshop week, the teacher workshop week to do early assessments, and the first day of school for elementary for early assessments. So it's the same time as we had on last year's calendar.
So the high school students are, or secondary is 168 days, and then, I mean, that elementary is 167 days with the school year next year?
There'd be one less, yep.
So it's not going to be two less, then?
Can I get, I don't know the exact, I don't have my days right here in front of me, but I do know, if I'm explaining this right, that it's the exact same structure of calendar that you, yeah, that you approved last year, yep.
Okay. Well, that's good. That's good to know, because I was kind of concerned that we were getting rid of another day, and that's something that, as you know, I'm against, the whole idea of getting rid of instructional days. I want our kids in school more days.
I remember all those conversations well, a year ago, Director Bennett, yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, so then I don't need the rest of my questions. We can move on.
Madam Chair?
Just some feedback. We, all the high schoolers love early release days for those finals days. I think that it works really well, because those two-hour periods were really long, but early release seems to be working really well for us.
Thank you for that feedback. It's consistent with other feedback I've gotten, so appreciate that.
What have we gotten? Any feedback from anyone else about the early release for elementary, parents or students or teachers or anything?
Just anecdotal, and the feedback's been positive. We've shown that we can handle and execute early release days, so that's a good thing.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none. All in favor of the 2019-2020 school calendar, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have our legislative priorities for 2019.
Yes, please. Madam Chair? Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves legislative priorities for the 2019 legislative session that support full funding for special education services, increase the formula to align with inflation rate, reduce the number of assessments, and replace high school MCA exams with a nationally recognized college entrance exam, ACT. Increase funding with a nationally recognized college entrance exam, ACT, increase funding for English learner programs, provide early childhood funding, allow local control and renewal of referendum for non-human money, and increase funding for school-based mental health services.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Who wants to address this?
Sure, I can, I can start and then our other two board members can add any additional information. But the Legislative Committee, you know, in, working together with the administration, we finally decided on this platform, legislative platform, to bring to you for board approval. Pretty much speaks for itself. If you took a look at the documents, this is the recommendation that we have as priorities for this year for our legislative platform. However, you need to remember that what we do every year is we bring it to the board for approval, but it's subject to any type of changes as needed. As we know, you know, as the legislative session takes place, you know, things happen quickly, things change, new information we get, and so we can always adjust some things and if it is necessary, we'll probably bring it back to you for any additions or any other changes.
Anyone else have a comment?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Just quickly, I appreciate the work the Legislative Committee's done. As always, I'm, I'm happy to see that there's an inflationary index asked on here. That's, it's, it's long overdue. I appreciate and support all of the, all of the asks on here. So I appreciate the, the work that the committee has done.
Yeah, these, these asks are, they're pretty, you guys have probably seen them for the last couple of years. That's something we've been trying to get for as long as I've been on the board and it looks like we might make some headway this year with our current governor. He's, he's probably supportive of all, all these, so hopefully we can actually make some traction on this. And like Dick said, the, the one that I'm, would really like to see pass is the, putting the formula to inflation so that we don't keep falling behind like we've been for the past couple of decades.
Thank you. Anyone else? Director Beebe?
I have been following developments within the legislature and have found that they are focusing right now on fully funding the special ed services. It's moving in a direction that we want it to go. I don't know how far it will go, but that would help quite a great amount in our general fund preservation and not having to cross-subsidize the special education needs with the regular needs. So I think some of these priorities are definitely possible this year and I think if we follow what's happening in the news. And also, Area Metro, not area, Association of Metro School Districts provides weekly updates and is showing that some of these have some traction as well. So I encourage my board members to keep up to date on that, read it weekly, see what's happening. And, and I plan to go down to the legislature in, when it warms up, just to take in some of the discussion that's going on. So I appreciate your reading this and we're trying to work to better our district and what we need.
I just want to ask Director Beebe a question to clarify, if that's okay? So when you say that they're working on fully funding special ed, but it's the federal government that has not given their forty percent, so are you saying they're looking at also filling in the federal government's gap? Or they're just looking at the state's portion to actually fund it? Because there is a big difference. So I just want to make sure, when you say it's be fully funded, I'm assuming they're not willing to give all the federal money?
No, they're looking at the state
Okay.
and what the state is responsible for.
Okay.
I think we need to, you know, write our senators. When I brought this up at a meeting with our newly-elected Representative Dean Phillips, he was totally unaware that some of these things were actually federal issues. And specifically the mental health part that we're looking at for funding for that. But, but he is unaware of the role of funding for education from the federal government. So I think it would do those watching and listening to, to write you letters and let them know that our districts need the funding that was promised. They promised forty percent and they have sent fourteen percent. And so we continually fall behind. That's one reason why our districts are having financial challenges, even if they're well-managed. And there was a great presentation at the Association of Metro School Districts on this. So if someone wants the link, I'd be happy to direct them to that. They can just email me.
I just want to say that I hope that people have better luck with their letters to the, to the federal government in this funding than I have. I've been advocating for it since my son was three years old. I came to the conclusion that I would not see it in my lifetime. So hopefully there will be some change there.
Yes, Madam Chair. Another thing to please remember is that those priorities are very similar to what other school districts have in their legislative platforms as well. And same with other organizations like Minnesota School Board Association and Association, AMSD, Association Metropolitan School Districts. So you'll see that many of those are very similar, just in different order. The other thing is if you have, I think I saw that today in the news, I happened to see something on Facebook today from Minnesota School Board Association is, I believe, and we have talked about that during our last meeting. What was the name of the meeting?
Organizational?
The last meeting, we went to approve all the resolutions that the three of us went to.
Oh, sure, delegate assembly.
The delegate assembly, thank you. When we went to the delegate assembly and we talked about, or Minnesota School Board Association talked about taking this, the, the issue with special education funding, taking it to the Attorney General. I read today that they have finally met with the Attorney General and hoping, you know, requesting that he helps with bringing this issue at the, at the federal level. So maybe there is hope. We hope that that happens.
I'm getting old, so hopefully it'll be before I'm going.
Yeah, I was just going to go back to the, the special ed portion. Our, our hope is that our state will join the growing number of other states that are suing the federal government to get those funds, so.
Exactly.
Maybe we can get that direction with our Attorney General would sue the federal government and get some of those special ed funds that we've been promised for the last, well, my entire life.
If nothing else, it at least brings attention to it by all the states and, and shows people the gap and, and how irresponsible they've been in funding it for the last, I don't know, it was past when I was in high school, so however long that was.
Nineteen seventy-five.
Or middle school, maybe.
I was one.
All right. Was it a resolution? Yes, it was. So we need to vote.
Yes, we do.
All in favor of our legislative priorities twenty nineteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No one. Thank you. Brings us to board member reports. We'd like to go first.
All right, I'll, I'll make mine quick. I know it's cold and getting colder out there. Just a quick, a quick note to say thank you to, I had the opportunity to go to the parent-teacher conferences over at Kennedy. And as always, that's a, that's an, it's an interesting day. It's, I think it's like eleven to seven during the day. And I'd just like to say thank you to all the teachers, all the staff for making that happen. I know they come early, they give up their mealtimes. There isn't a clock that says, if you're in the middle of a conversation, I have to get up and go eat. They'll finish that conversation with the parents, grandparent, whoever's there in front of them. And it certainly is worth noting that they do that. It's, it's probably not the best format for that and they're open to suggestions, but, excuse me, it's, a word of thanks needs to go to all the staff who make that happen. It was a, it's always an interesting day and it's nice to, to hear from cheerful staff. Just a quick reminder to all our drivers, especially when it's cold, people seem to be in a hurry, you don't want to get out of your car. When you see that stop arm go out on our buses, you should consider the stop arm the same as a red light. If you think that you're too far over in six lanes over, just, just think of it as a red light. That's, that's a good way to think of it. Just if you see a red light, just stop. We don't need to, we don't need to have any accidents, we don't need to have any, any mishaps. We don't, we want to make sure that all of our students, all of our staff and parents are safe. When those buses are out running and that stop arm goes out, let's just stop, take a moment, take an extra breath. Also, I'd like to shine a little light, a little awesome, share some kudos to Director Corman. Nellie was facilitating conversation for our MSBA All-State Conference. That was on Wednesday the sixteenth, and Nellie, you'll help me if I get this wrong. The, the conversation that you facilitated was called Bridging the Classroom in the Boardroom. Is that right?
That's right.
That was Wednesday that preceded the Thursday, Friday MSBA All-State Conference. So just want to shine some light in Nellie's corner for, for facilitating conversation. There was some feedback later on Thursday and then from what I understand, it was well-attended and, and people really liked the, the message that you shared. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, it had, it was in relation to global learning education and how important it is to bring this into our classrooms and to be aware of what it really means, you know, beyond what it means to be globally competent, by putting those thoughts into action and, you know, what, what our commitment is with our students and our society by bringing this and, and putting it into real action, you know, what are we doing for our communities? So that was, that was a very fun thing for me to do.
Do you have anything else you want to add? No, any reports over there?
Oh, yeah, I'll go. I don't know if, whatever. I guess I can go and go if we just do this side and wrap around, whatever. Okay, so Policy Committee met, as, as we know, and we have a new member. We have Beth Beebe who's replacing Dick Bergstrom. Dick will be missed. He was really good at asking questions and keeping on top of things. Beth seems to be really good at the attention to detail, which is something that is important. So, and I think we did seven policies and that should put us at our, our goal for twenty policies for the year. So we have hit that or surpassed that. Deb isn't here to give me the official count. I'm, I'm pretty sure we're either at twenty or over twenty and we're still going to be meeting again this year, so we'll have even more. And then also at the MSBA Leadership Conference, I just wanted to talk a little about the two breakout sessions that I went to. One of them was LGBTQ one oh one, which was put on by Outfront Minnesota, which was a, which is a really great organization. There's a lot of advocacy and education about LGBTQ, people within our community. And it was, the session was pretty much just to give general information and definitions to terms like, you know, assumed sender or assigned gen, or assigned sex at birth and gender identity and expression and some terms that a lot of us don't really have common use of and are knowledge of and especially within the school district. So it was good for, to educate board members and superintendents just these common terms and trying to give a, just a little desire for policies, to try to make policies more gender-neutral, which using, instead of using a he/she pronouns, using they pronouns, which is something that we've started doing in this district, which is, is a good thing, trying to eliminate those gender-specific pronouns. So that was a pretty good session. I also went to a session that was called School Nutrition Programs and Their Value. And it was put on by the Minnesota School Nutrition Association, Henne, Inoka-Hennepin School District and the Lewiston-Altaro School District. And the superintendent of the Lewiston-Altaro School District, he started off by saying that in two thousand and twelve, his school board came to the MSBA Assembly and then, well, they have all the vendors, they had some delicious street tacos and, you know, from some contractor. And then so they all came to him saying, why aren't we serving this to our students? We want these delicious street tacos. I thought it was kind of funny because those same street tacos were there this year and several of his board members had those and asked ourselves that same question. And so what that conversation started in his district was, should we go to contracted food service or should we try to save our, our current nutritional program? And he was more in favor of, of keeping the current nutrition program because he wanted to protect his, his employees. The employees that work in the, the kitchens are typically parents and people that live in the community. He didn't want risk outsourcing to a contractor and putting those jobs in, in jeopardy. So what they ended up doing is having a really long, in-depth investigation or just looking at their, their nutrition program. And they looked at other school districts to see what they were doing. And what I thought was really good is they brought in a consultant to kind of give them some fresh perspective, to look at some outside eyes looking at their school district, to see what they're doing well and where they can make some improvements. And what they found out was it wasn't really just what they're serving, but how they're serving it. And so they made some changes to their food service lines and did some better marketing and then did some menu updates and their results were that their food service program that was losing money started making money and they had much more customer satisfaction and their participation rates went up. So I shared all this information with the superintendent and the chair and the vice chair because I think that, you know, it's still one of the biggest complaints I get from, from students and, and parents, our, our quality of, of our food. And I think that we should and we can do better, so I'm hopeful that we can make some changes to our food service. And that will conclude my report. It was long, sorry.
I just have a couple of things really short. I had a chance to attend the Westwood PTA and, you know, besides the usual business that the PTA does, they also had this activity that I thought was really interesting. They broke into groups and they all worked on information that they would like to see included in like a newsletter about the school if the PTA were to put out a newsletter. So they worked in groups and then shared that. So I don't know if they are eventually putting them into a newsletter, but anyway, that's what they were working on. So I'm hoping I'll see a newsletter from that project. Then I just wanted to mention that when we were all at the MSBA, for people that don't know, is Minnesota School Board Association's Leadership Conference and we have the, the MSBA has divided the, the state into districts there and we all went to our district meeting. And I just wanted to mention that I think Bloomington was the only school district in that room that had all of their board members present. And the other schools noted that and said, wow, Bloomington has everybody here, so. And I think somebody mentioned that we also had everybody there last year. So I just wanted to say thank you to my colleagues for being there and understanding that professional development and always continuing learning is a great thing for a school board also. So thank you. Proud of you guys.
One more thing. So after we have approved the legislative priorities for this year, the plan was to bring it to, to share it with the Bloomington Advocacy Council tomorrow, but I'm guessing that's not happening anymore. It's canceled. So we will be doing this in the following days. We will just share it with the group so that we can take some feedback from the group as well in case there, there's anything that we need to add later on or change. Also, I think you have received the date for the forum with the legislators. That was scheduled for January, was that? I mean, February nineteen, I believe?
Yes.
Yes, February nineteen, we will have the opportunity to have all legislators here with us again this year.
Can I just throw in one more remark about the MSBA conference? So another session they have that I didn't go to, but I've gone to before, was Student School Board Representatives and, and, you know, how it works in district. And they have actual students on school boards that kind of share their experiences and it's kind of where the next of this all started. I went to that and we need to do that here and so maybe next year, you'll still be here, maybe we can actually present and you can share your experience. This could be a fun idea.
Love to.
Yeah, maybe you would.
We might have to give you a note to get out of class, but I don't know if that will work.
An excused day from school?
Oh, no.
Or at least an hour.
To find a parking place.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
I was able to go to both days of the MSBA convention and I found the keynote speaker, David Horsauger, had some really good points. He was talking about the trust issue and how it affects the different boards and how they function, how it works within your school, of building trust. And one of the things I took back out of that was he talked about being grateful, creating a climate of, of being thankful and grateful for the people around you and what they do, because successful companies, which is who he often speaks to, found that they were successful when people felt appreciated.
when people felt appreciated and needed and acknowledged. And so, I just want to say a shout-out to everyone here in this room, and then all of those that come day by day faithfully to every school building, every school facility, and put their work in and do it heartily, and serve our kids and our community. And so, I just say thank you from my heart, because I know it's hard work, and you chose to serve in this way, so thanks.
Amen.
Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Great, thank you. Parents and guardians of current fifth-grade students are invited to attend an open house at the middle school your child will be attending next year. Each of the middle schools will have an information, informational open house on Monday, February 4th, beginning at 6:30 PM. Your students are welcome to join you. We look forward to you and your child joining us on February 4th. Second topic is, at today, our district and the Bloomington Career College Academy hosted the Bloomington Noonday Rotary Club for a luncheon. Cheryl Martin did an excellent job as a keynote speaker for that event. She spoke about our district's vision, pathways to career in college, and how our district is bringing that vision to life for each of our students. She did an excellent job. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else to come before the board this evening? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Stay warm.
No.[1550.15]